Has everybody signed in? On the way in? Hi, Mayor Barnes. Hey, I have a question for you. Do you have the form? Do you need it? Do you have?
Yes, you really need it. You lost the screen.
Yeah.
Was it the welcome?
Okay.
It's getting a bit murder of all.
Okay.
Especially with that.
Okay.
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 Watch your step, though. Baby traps. Baby traps for the media.
Do you mind if I do my laptop?
Not at all. There's a power strip right there. And if you need Wi-Fi, it's Drawbridge, all in one word, capital D, capital D.
Yes.
Yes.
You're ready?
I know.
I know.
We've still got a couple minutes. You can sit in the cushy chair if you want. Mark Bailey might kick you out. I don't know. I think he's coming, but...
Mark, you can take the cushy chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, he says he's not going to make it.
Oh, okay.
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 Yep.
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 As President Porter has put it, I'll go ahead and call this work session into order. And also, at this time, the City of White Salmon has a full forum. I'll go ahead and go into a special meeting of the City of White Salmon. First of all, I would like to welcome the panel who sit in front of us. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the elected officials for the gorge area and the general public. I would like to introduce my commission, Mr. Ben Shepard, Mr. John Everett, Mr. Brian Short, Mr. Dave Meriwether, Michael Kelly. The purpose of this work session is to have a high, in-depth decision for procurement options for a new bridge between Oregon and Washington. We will look at the public financing, public-private partnership, and various possible combinations of those. During the meeting today, the work session today, you will hear the word "public-private partnership" referred to as the PPP, or most commonly used, the P3. It is a contract between a public sector entity and a private sector entity. A P3 arrangement presents alternative to conventional procurement procedures and policy. Please keep your questions relevant to bridge replacement, not to existing bridges we have today. If you feel you need a question answered for that reason, Michael, our port staff will be available after me, or any working hours between nine and five. Some things I want to point out is that this is a public meeting, and all comments and decisions will be public record. There will also be video in the meeting today. Bathrooms are through this door and to your right. Please silence your cell phones at this time, please. And our agenda includes a project update by Michael, and then a panel discussion, and then a deep dive into preparation questions for the panel. At this time, I will turn it over to my executive director, Michael Kelly.
I'm going to stand up so everyone can hear me well. I'll just reiterate, thanks all for coming. This is a work session for the commission, and we have three terrific panelists that come from various parts of the country, each with deep and different experience in alternative procurement methods. First of all, I want to introduce Fred Cowell, the port CFO, and Kevin Greenwood, who's the project manager for this project, and he's been on the job for two weeks, two and a half weeks.
Yeah.
And sorry, Kevin comes to us from the port of Newport, and prior to that, the port of Harraway, and has significant public sector and public administration experience. We're really glad to have him. We'll get to the introduction of the panelists in a minute, but I wanted to just give a quick overview of the bridge, and that's primarily for the panelists, but also for the public. I think the commission knows most of it. The bridge was constructed in 1924. It was constructed based on the Bridge Act of 1906. It was built by a private company, the Oregon-Washington Bridge Company. So, one could argue that it was the original public-private partnership, but certainly it was a private entity using private money. A lot of it was local investors that came together to build the bridge. That was prior to the dam going in, so this was basically a free-flowing river. When the dam went in in the '30s, the port was required, sorry, the Oregon-Washington Bridge Company was required to raise the bridge, install a lift van. And when it was built, it had wooden planks. It was a toll, it was a toll bridge. There were specific tolls for carriages and for pedestrians and bicycles, and there was a discount if you had more than one, had a cap. So, it was a different day, it was a different era. The bridge is, some parts of it are 90 years old, many parts of it are approaching 80 years old. When the port purchased it in 1949 and '50, the port purchased it from the Oregon-Washington Bridge Company and has owned and operated ever since. The bridge in 2016, calendar year 2016, for the first time exceeded four million trips across the bridge. So, this is an important facility, a large facility, to these communities. It's not a large facility compared to many other transportation structures around the country, but it's still, it's vital here. And the bridge is old, it's deficient, it's, it has seismic challenges, shall we say, it's obsolete, it doesn't have bike paths or pedestrian paths. The lift van, movable lift van, has been a challenge to us, always a challenge to make sure it's open and operational, and spans a federal waterway. So, there's an existing imperative that this lift van always be up for navigation travel. If it were to be in the down position and incapable of being lifted when a barge or tow came through, there would be some specific, it would get some very specific and immediate attention from the U.S. Coast Guard. So, when we look back a little bit, we see significant progress that was made. In the early 2000s, the draft environmental impact statement was completed, and in about 2010, the type, size, and location study was completed. I will just say, both of those efforts were primarily driven by the Washington side of the river. Congressman Hastings, on the day of earmarks, was able to deliver funding that flowed through the Southwest Washington Regional Transportation Council, and was able to carry out those two important steps, DEIS and type, size, and location. The first one looked at multiple possibilities for how you transit the river here, and I believe, there's people in the room who can tell me the answer, but it would say it doesn't end, from Mojer to the west of here. And ultimately, it came down to the most obvious and best choice, but for the location of the crossing, was immediately west of the existing bridge. And that's in part because you have an interchange here on the interstate highway, and you need to connect to that, and on the Washington side, there's an existing intersection, although it would have to move if there was a new bridge location. So, the TSNL was done, and there was an agreement written at that time that reflected that all the public parties on either side of the bridge, and was an aspirational commitment to replace a new bridge. Interesting, but the two non-signatories to that agreement were the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Washington Department of Transportation. And they just simply felt they could not sign that, because by signing it, it implied that there would be further follow-up and potential funding, and they couldn't do that. But everybody else did, City of White Salmon, City of Vengeance, counties, et cetera. So, the commission, several years ago, really made this an important emphasis for staff to really take a hard, sustained focus on what would be necessary to essentially replace the bridge, the pre-steps, the pre-development, the setup, the setup section. And there was a number of them. When the FAST Act was approved, passed by Congress about four years ago, there's a specific amendment in that that identifies projects within national scenic areas as being eligible for a fast lane grant. That doesn't guarantee anything, but it does give us a little bit of a special identifier if there was to be a project that was proposed for, in that case, the FAST line program. That now, with the new administration, is called the INFRA program. We were able to get the bridge on the national highway system. That was an important step. We, it's now on the Washington State Critical Freight Network, for example. So, there's different ways, steps have been taken to make this bridge, emphasize its importance, and make it stand out from other projects. Then, most recently, the commission really said, you got to get into Oregon Legislature. In a way, Washington, on its part, or part of its part, and now, we got to focus on Oregon. And we knew the legislature would be meeting in 2017, we knew a transportation bill was likely coming, and we wanted to do two things. We wanted to get a piece of that transportation bill for pre-development work, and we also wanted to clarify and add to the statutory authorities for the port of the river. So, the latter one, House Bill 2075, that one clarified the statutory authorities and allowed the port to even consider a public-private partnership or an alternative procurement. Prior to that, only ODOT effectively had the ability to do that, based on specific statutory authority that flowed through specific administrative rules that ODOT adopted. So, the legislation said, look, we'll give you these authorities, but you also need to approve, adopt administrative rules that govern how you consider unsolicited and solicited proposals. Those administrative rules are about 45 pages, they're very specific, they are near, a draft is near completion, and the commission will consider, will take the first look at that draft at the meeting next week, and then likely have hearings in February and look to adoption by March. Those rules have to be in place for any kind of alternative procurement method, because it effectively allows you to bypass some significant public contracting rules that are in statute right now. The $5 million is part of the transportation bill was specifically designated to carry out a final environmental impact statement, and carry out other associated tasks that are necessary to characterize and prepare for the permit process for the bridge. That $5 million, we now, just as of a couple weeks ago, we have a signed intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, which then allows us, as a reimbursement grant, or reimbursement agreement, but allows us to then start working forward on the FEIS and other tasks. That's what effectively allowed us to hire someone like Kevin to be the focal point for project replacement efforts, and also allowed us to carry out and assemble the team that's needed to complete the administrative rules, to do financial analyses and alternative modeling, to do traffic analyses, and many other steps. That effort is underway, and is, will begin to ramp up and be more specific in the next, the next few months. I think I'm in control of this?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure of the next slide here, but...
It's the first question for the panel.
I'm looking for the...
Org chart?
Yeah. I'm going over my time limit, aren't I? I'm just trying.
You're fine. You're here to learn.
So, I just wanted to give you the panel this concept. This is an organizational chart, obviously, but it's not necessarily the final one that will evolve, but it does reflect some specific decisions that, in an organizational structure. This is the port commission here, this middle box is the public project administration part. Here's the position of Kevin Greenwood. We need, so that position's been filled, and when you see a broader outline around it, it's been, the means it's been filled. We have to keep working in Oregon, in the Oregon Legislature, and we also have to start working more intentionally in the Washington Legislature, and that requires help. So, there's a Washington lobbyist here, an Oregon lobbyist there. Here is Kevin's position as the project director for the project. We have retained, and we have an agreement now with the Southwest Washington Regional Transportation Commission, and their staff in order, because they have vast experience in preparing RFPs, issuing RFPs, and all of that, those necessary steps to public contracting. And that public contracting effort would lead to a selection of an EIS manager, likely a very large engineering firm, one with lots of in-house capabilities and ability to associate with sub consultants. That EIS manager would then have a number of subs and component pieces to carry out the EIS. The estimate for the EIS, time-wise, is about two and a half years.
Yeah, it's fine.
And that's from where we're sitting right now. It could go slower, if there's a lot of controversy, and if there's lawyers involved, it could potentially go quicker. But that's, this, this area down here of the org chart is fundamentally driving the EIS. We also have retained a firm called OTAC, and OTAC, their staff have experienced specifically with the priorities on this bridge, and significant experience in dealing with FHWA and federal projects. On this side, you have project oversight. Those of you in the room will be receiving emails from Kevin in this area, the project advisory committee, and that's intended to be a group that we consult with, that is able to look in on all the efforts that will be underway over several years, and be able to provide advice and counsel and input. Those primarily are elected officials, or they're designees. The steering committee is really, because the financing is primarily coming from ODOT, so we need an oversight group, a steering committee that would primarily be the Region One managers in ODOT, WashDOT, and the port of the river. The technical advisory committee will be assembled once the EIS management firm or EIS managers identify, and those are lots of local entities, but providing more detail at a staff level and the technical expertise. General counsel, this is a, a P3 legal advisor will be selected, whether they're there or over here. The point is, they have that specialized expertise in alternative procurement methods. This circle becomes an important hire, and it could be more than one firm, but that's sort of a quarterback on the P3 alternative procurement approaches. And then, there's a number of sub-specialties in traffic and financial modeling, et cetera. So, it isn't final, but this gives you, I wanted to just give everyone a glimpse of a mental picture of where we're headed, or at least what we're thinking right now.
Michael, can we ask questions?
I'd rather, Mayor, if you just wait for a moment, we'll finish it. So, I just want to mention, we did, and I think many of you are aware, the port did receive an unsolicited proposal from a firm called United Bridge Partners. That came in at the end of last year. It came in at a time when we clearly don't have rules in place to even govern how we accept or consider unsolicited proposal. So, that proposal was returned back to that firm with a letter saying, thank you very much. And that has caused some question about why that was done, why would you return a proposal to someone? And the primary reason is, we don't, we didn't have the rules in place to consider it, and we need to be true to the legislature, which is allowing us to access $5 million to carry out work. The other thing, the other reason, is that we're frankly not ready. And part of the reason that we're here, and we have three experts here, is because we need to understand better when the right time is to consider them. The further down the road you go, in terms of characterizing the project, understanding things like the geology underlying the future bridge route, the cost estimate, the Washington authorities that would be needed, many other questions, the extent you're further along, it's the extent you're better prepared to enter into consideration of a proposal, or certainly into negotiations. That's a staff standpoint. We have experts here that can help us understand if that's right or not. So, just a few basics, there's nothing certain about a public-private partnership here. This is one alternative. The legislature allowed us to consider those alternatives, but it's not yet certain and won't be for, I believe, quite some time, whether that really is the path that we can follow. There's other ways, multiple other ways or variation ways to do this. We need to raise our understanding of staff, and we need to, the commission needs to raise this understanding, and frankly, this community does too, so we know generally what we're talking about when we are considering or discussing a public-private partnership. So, it's a Q&amp;A format, I'll moderate it. The questions will be up there, the questions are your agenda, so I don't think there's any uncertainty, and I'll repeat them about what the question is. I may add a little bit of context when I do that, as I ask the question. Each of our three panelists will, one of them, for each question, will take the lead in answering the question, and the other two panelists will weigh in. Additional comments, maybe they'll disagree, maybe there's another way of looking at an answer to a question or not. There's an opportunity for elected officials. Any elected officials here, you have different breakpoints in the Q&amp;A, we invite questions of the panelists, and then, at the very end, there's another opportunity for any elected official to ask questions. This is fundamentally a work session between a group of experts in the commission, in conjunction with the local elected official. The public are invited to ask questions, and at the very end, there's an opportunity to do so. So, if you think of something, write it down, and at the end of this, we figure we'll go about three hours, and we've got folks here, we'll go as long as anyone's in the room. So, thank you very much. We have three folks, thanks for being here, everybody. We have three panelists, and I'm going to ask each of them to introduce themselves to you.
Look, I am the, also, the media will be able to ask questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Same time, elected officials. So, if you look at your agenda, under the panel questions, at the end of the panel, general number four, Michael will ask, because we need an elected official and media to answer those questions.
So, David, why don't we start with you? Introduce yourself to the commission.
Certainly. Thank you, Michael. My name is Dave Klingis. I'm the managing director with the firm of Piper Jaffray. I was asked to be here today because I am an expert in public-private partnerships. I started in this field, I hesitate to say, over 30 years ago, when local governments outside Denver decided they needed a new road to get north-south traffic patterns around Denver. 10 years after we started, we did our initial financing. 30 years later, that's now the 50-mile E470 toll road, it generates over $200 million a year, and is a major success. It was really the first time the private sector was asked to identify a way to solve a traffic problem. Since that time, most of my experience has been in toll facilities. I've done six startup toll roads in the country. I've done one new bridge over the Portsmouth River in Richmond, and I've worked both on the private sector and the public sector. So, my work involves governmental financing, doing bonds for entities such as the Pennsylvania Turnpike and the Illinois Tollway, working with private bidders, firms that would be interested in doing projects like this, to advise them and arrange financing. But we also advise governments on how to look at this industry and best use it for the needs that they have. We have current engagements advising the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the New York Metropolitan Transportation Authority, as well as Sound Transit. So, I'm here today basically as a focus on financing, but I have advised both sides of this type of transaction.
I'm a little Clary with Clary Consulting. I spent the majority of my career in public service. At the end of my career, I was the number two person at Florida Department of Transportation, led the development of their P3 program, and brought into the country a new P3 model that has been adopted around the country, pretty much across the board with states that are considering that, and you may hear some of that a little bit later, a structure called the vulnerability payment. I have, since I left public sector, been advising both government and private sector across the board, developed many toll roads over the years, both on the public side and the private side, understand kind of what I call the bleeding edge of P3s, where you're learning, and kind of what I call drinking from a fire hose, where you go through it, to getting to refining that to what really works, and you go through that. So, I've got a lot of those scars on my back of going through that, and hopefully, if you go down that road, you won't have to experience those same scars, and it can be done in a much more productive process. I look forward to talking with you more today.
Thanks, all.
Hi, everyone. I'm Philippe Papan with Macdonald, which is an engineering consulting firm. Our project is a very advisory team. The company globally has worked on over 750 P3 alternative delivery projects all around the world, throughout Canada and the U.S., and you can pick up in Europe and Asia. Macdonald, we have about 3,000 people here in the U.S., with offices in Portland, Seattle. My focus is mostly working on public side, helping owners going through procurement of the P3, licensing, there's a financial, legal advisors, and coordinating this procurement. On the private sector side, when we provide advisory work, we work either with investors to look at helping them in the negotiations with the owners, or we also work to optimize their proposals in terms of content. This content is technical and commercial, and how they are intermediate, and it's about usually risk allocation. I also work tremendously helping institutional investors, banks, looking at these projects. Personally, I've worked on about 50 P3 transactions in multiple jurisdictions, including in the U.S., and I have an accent, I come from abroad, I'm based, I've been based in San Francisco for three years, focused on the US markets.
Right. Thanks, Philippe. Mayor Poucher, I'm sorry, did you have a question earlier?
Yeah, I was looking at your outline, and it looks like it's strictly a DOT approach, you know, we have a Department of Transportation approach coming down on it. Did you ever look at a private equity, looking at giving them all the risk and the ability to go ahead and do that? You know, that way, you don't have to write the EIS, you don't have to have the infrastructure or the personnel on top of it, and it looks like that would be, you know, one outline if you got to look at a P3, if you want to look at that also.
If you looked at a timeframe, or look at the next three years, you know, absolutely, that's a possibility. But we have a $5 million allocation from the state of Oregon that's required to carry out certain tasks.
But you don't have to spend that. If you did the P3, you'd get that money back to the state.
No, well, I mean, in theory, you could, but it may not be the wisest idea, because, as I tried to say earlier, the further are, the further you are along in terms of characterizing the project, the better position you'll be in to negotiate the transaction that benefits the community. If you went too early, you'd basically not have a lot of known knowns, and you'd try to negotiate something with so much uncertainty that, one, the agreement you entered wouldn't amount to much, and it would amount to likely, effectively, an option. A firm would say, okay, we'll sign this agreement, but for these to...
Personally, I've worked on about 50 P3 transactions in multiple jurisdictions, including in the US. And I have an accent, I come from abroad, I'm based, I've been based in San Francisco for three years, focused on the US markets.
Right, thanks Philippe. Mayor Poucher, I'm sorry, did you have a question earlier?
Yeah, I was looking at your outline and it looks like it's strictly a DOT approach. You know, we have a Department of Transportation approach coming down on it. Did you ever look at a private equity, looking at giving them all the risk and the ability to go ahead and do that? You know, that way you don't have to write the EIS, you don't have to have the infrastructure or the personnel on top of it. And it looks like that would be, you know, one outline if you go to look at a P3, if you want to look at that also.
If you looked at a timeframe or look at the next three years, you know, absolutely, that's a possibility. But we have a $5 million allocation from the state of Oregon that's required to carry out certain tasks.
But you don't have to spend that. If you did the P3, you'd give that money back to the state.
No, well, I mean, in theory, you could, but it may not be the wisest idea because as I tried to say earlier, the further you are along in terms of characterizing the project, the better position you'll be in to negotiate the transaction that benefits the community. If you went too early, you'd basically not have a lot of known knowns and you'd try to negotiate something with so much uncertainty that one, the agreement you entered wouldn't amount to much. It would amount to likely effectively an option. A firm would say, "Okay, we'll sign this agreement," but for these different things, unless they're carried out, they will not be able to do the private.
If I could interject, the sponsoring entity for the legal process can't be a private party.
Yeah.
A private enterprise cannot do an EIS?
They can do work, but they can't request through approval.
Well, we'll get into that in a minute, but thank you. That's a good point. Okay, so if we can get to the questions.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to be. Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. So before we get to the questions, Mr. Clary has a PowerPoint for the commission. I'll just provide an overview of this topic, this arena we're in.
I actually don't have that loaded.
Oh.
Hold on one moment.
So this is where I duff yelped.
Yeah.
I danced.
Sorry about that, yes. I'll be right back. Kevin, is that on your thumb drive that you gave me earlier?
Sure. What are you looking for?
The Mr. Lowell Clary's.
All of the, yeah. Actually, you want it.
I'll go grab it. It'll take me 30 seconds. Right back.
So that specific point that was raised, the public-private entity can not carry out an EIS without a sponsor.
The lead sponsor has to be a governmental entity. You can contract with a private entity to do the work, but the lead sponsor that makes the final decisions and submits it to the federal agency for approval is a public agency.
If you, I'm confused, or what is it that you'd be submitting for?
Well, what you're going to submit is, when you go to your final environmental impact statement,
Yeah.
you have to go through analysis and submit that to resource agencies like Coast Guard, FOR, okay, Trans going over. And you did this in your draft.
Corps of Engineers, did it get it too or no?
Pardon?
Like the Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife. All the resource agencies that are in this particular area have to be consulted. They have to review it. They give you comments. You have to respond to those comments and be responsive to their comments. They can stop the process if they don't feel like you're being responsive. You also have to go through public involvement during that process where you reach out to the public and get their comments as well. There are certain schedules that are built into the federal law that you have to go through that allow federal agencies time to respond and go through that. That's part of what Michael was talking about earlier, that you can't control that process because federal resource agency may say, "You haven't addressed this particular issue. I need you to do more analysis."
And you must be a public entity to make those applications to all these various.
Yes. You're the submitter.
You're submitting the work that you've done in the environmental.
Yes. And normally, you would hire a private firm to do that work, as you did in the past. You hired engineering firms to come in and do that analysis for you. And you would review it as a public owner and then submit it to the federal agency at that point in time.
Projects are exempt, even some bridges, but you're in a federal order way. You're not exempt.
You're not exempt.
I see.
So you're going to have at least.
I'm sorry, I got a bear behind you guys.
I guess my question was, so if you're a private, I think you're making the assumption that the Port of Good River would still own the bridge. And I guess I was looking at it that the private company would own the bridge. You know, the port would be completely out of it, the state would be completely out of it, and it would be a privately owned bridge. I thought then you, they can do the.
No, they cannot.
They can't do that, no. Okay, so you couldn't have a private company build a bridge.
You can have a private company build a bridge. Then the public agency, such as the port or the city or the state, somebody has to go and ask for the approval.
It has to be a public agency that processes the federal water.
Need for process.
All right, so you did need to juggle. So this is, Lola's put together a slideshow that kind of briefly on the overview of P3s.
This page is what I call the range. The top part is your traditional procurement process, design, bid, build, design, build, which most people are pretty comfortable with. Design, build, finance, we started in Florida. It essentially says where a public owner has money spread over a period of time, you just ask the private sector to fund it until they get paid back. Those are traditional approaches that most people are comfortable with. Then you start getting into P3. There's a range of those. You could do design, build, operate, maintain, where you hire somebody to come in. You still do the financing as a public agency. You still control the tolls as a public agency. You could go one more down, what we call availability payment, where the private sector adds the financing part to it, okay? So that's the difference is they now do the financing, but you pay them a set amount, okay, that they bid. They basically propose that set amount to you. Then you go into more of what's been talked about over here of where you have a private entity, you come in and they assume all the risk, okay? They assume the toll revenue. They assume all those elements that go into that. They do the financing. You essentially turn it over to them to do that project. And that's really what the bottom two are, okay? In Chicago, they actually did a long-term lease of a bridge, okay, where they turned it over for 99 years, okay? You could do that approach if you desire to do that, okay? Moving to a little bit of detail about the approaches, design, bid, build is typically the slowest, okay? You design it, it's a segmental process. There are no concurrent elements in that, okay? But you own everything, you control the process. A lot of public agencies, majority of public projects are delivered that way, okay? That is the most common way in the United States that projects are delivered through state and local agencies. Design, build is probably the next most common. You've seen a lot of big projects done with design, build. And the reason being is it can speed up the process because you're now doing some things concurrent of design and construction. So you're starting to merge elements of that process and move it quicker. You're also shifting some risk, okay? You could start asking for fixed prices at that point for design and construction because if you do the design, if there's a change out there, the contractor says, "Oh, that's different than the plans. You've got to pay me extra," okay? Design, build starts taking that risk and shifting it over. The warranty process typically is hard to go longer than three to five years, okay? And the reason for that is getting what they call their bonds to do that over a period of time. Most of the bonding companies won't go further than that.
Well, is this, is that the approach that we have a guaranteed maximum price?
Yes, you could have a guaranteed maximum price.
Fix that.
Yes.
So you know.
And you negotiate that out. There may be some elements of that the private sector says, "I just can't take that risk." And you may, as a public agency, say, "Okay, I'll assume that small risk area. You assume all the rest of it as a fixed price." An example could be fuel, okay? Sometimes fuel prices do this, okay? Could be steel, okay? If you're looking at that, it could be concrete or elements that go into the materials that do a lot of fluctuating. You may say, "We'll share that risk with you." Does that make sense?
It does. Oh, I'm sorry. The last point on your last slide was the finance confronted by the contractor. So contractors could bring in their own equity. They might build the project, but also bring in some equity to.
In the case of a design, build, it's typically not equity. It's more of like a bank loan or they could do some sort of financing on their side of it, okay? So there's typically not equity in this, other than what they would usually do in a design, build project. So the advantages that you would see, the owner's in charge, okay? You control these processes. You manage the bridge and the toll rates. You also, it maximizes competition. And what I mean by that is generally, all your industry can come and play in that. You're going to do your engineer over here, you're going to do your contractor over here. So it gives maximum competition because you're not combining a lot of elements. So you're going to see more people show up to bid on those particular elements. Not saying that's good or bad, that's just how it typically works. Cost of borrowing, typically, public agencies can borrow less expensively than private agencies can, okay? So normally, it's less expensive. That's not saying that it's the best value. I'm just talking about borrowing money, okay? That's an important point. The characteristics now getting into a P3, these are some of the key things you're going to see. These are typically longer-term agreements. They may be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, even 50 years, depending on what all you're putting into the P3. So you're also going to be adding in that element of equity, okay? They call it skin in the game from the private sector, okay? A lot of your business people, you understand that. That's how you do your business. So you're also getting into multiple elements of the project. You're starting to bring in some of the operations and maintenance and you may do toll collection, you may get into financing. So you're starting to add more pieces to this puzzle. You're also sharing risk, okay? As you go further into P3, you're shifting more risk as you go. So the types of P3s you're going to see in the market, lease of an existing asset. We talked about what Chicago did with a bridge, okay? They had a toll bridge, turned around, leased it out for 99 years, private sector wrote them a check, okay? Because they felt like it had a value to it, that they were willing to pay the public owner. And that's what the public owner wanted. They wanted money, okay? Now, that was a urban area, a lot of traffic, so a little different situation. Availability payment is where you are hiring a contractor, they're doing all of it. Design, build, finance, operate, maintain, they're doing all those elements, but you're going to pay them a fixed amount, okay, over time. In that situation, you still control the tolls, okay? You would still set the toll rates, you would still control the tolls. That's a key difference here. When you get a revenue risk, that's the difference. You're now saying the private sector is assuming those tolls and they're going to be setting the toll rates within the parameters you set in the contract, okay? So some of these early P3s, those were fairly flexible and the toll rates went up pretty quick. You can look at things like Indiana Turnpike, which was another lease of an existing asset. Toll rates went up pretty quick. So that's kind of how they got to the point of writing the public owner a check when they leased that asset. So as you get into project delivery for the P3, this is design, build, operate, maintain. You're still doing the financing, you're still managing the tolls, you're hiring a contractor to deliver soup to nuts. Design, build, operate, maintain, okay? Again, here, the warranty is an additional element you're picking up here. The warranty's for the length of the term. So they now are responsible. If something goes wrong out there, it's on them. They designed it, they build it, they're now operating and maintaining it, that's on them. You would still do in this situation, financing and managing the tolls, okay? Then you add in, you're going to do typically less design. You're going to do what they call a design criteria package, where you're going to design enough of the project that you can then put it in the market and they can give you fixed pricing on that for the rest of the project. Again, you're going to see fixed price proposal with this collectively. So when you get into the concession, again, the difference here is you're going to get a fixed price proposal and they're going to assume all the risk for the toll rates. When you do that agreement, you're going to have to put the policy for toll rate setting in that agreement because you would no longer be setting those. Now, some agencies have still kept control of that, okay? In Colorado, they did a P3. The P3 group has to come to them and say, "We want to change toll rates, here's why," okay? And the particular public owner says, "Okay," or "Hey, you might want to look at this and make some changes." They have, the public owner has to justify why they turn it down. Does that make sense?
Did they have an appeal process?
They do have an appeal process, but at the end of the day, it's up to the public owner. Now, it could go to court, you know, because sometimes you do, these are agreements and you do have the court that you can resolve agreement differences when they come up. And we'll go into this in more detail a little bit later. The key thing for a P3 is you're sharing risk. You're starting to shift things. Private sector generally doesn't like the environmental risk, okay? They generally don't. Most P3s, you will see the public owner delivers the environmental approvals. And the reason being is you can't control the schedule. And in the private sector world, schedule, delays, that's money, okay? That can kill a project. If you have things pop up, that can create lengthy delays in that process. Generally, right-of-way acquisition, if you have to buy land, again, particularly if it's eminent domain, the public has to do that under law. So, but you start getting into design and construction, permitting operations and maintenance, you can have the private sector pick those up. They're very comfortable doing that.
Like stated, risk would also be something the public entity would have to take on.
You can share it. It depends. Depends on the situation. Legal changes typically are on the public owner, but in some cases, depending on what the issue is, you may be able to negotiate those out, okay? And I'll give you an example, toll rate setting, okay? Could the state of Oregon all of a sudden decree one day, "We're not going to have any toll roads," okay? Potentially could. So the private sector is going to say, "I'm not willing to assume that risk. You, public owner, are going to have to assume that risk and you're going to have to then work with the state of Oregon to make us whole." Does that make sense? So, because we went under this law assumption when we executed that agreement. So what are the benefits? They can accelerate projects, a P3 can. You can generate economic stimulus as part of that. You do bring in private sector expertise as part of that process. Use others' money, okay? You're going to be bringing in equity, you're going to be bringing in other money. And it can promote innovation and it usually does as part of that process. The other thing you'll see with a P3 that the industry has shown over and over is typically their own time in delivery because you incentivize them that way and typically their own budget or under budget because again, you incentivize it that way. Whereas public projects typically go longer and they have cost increases. So that's pretty common in the area.
Lola, can I, can I make a comment on your question, John, please? About the risk allocations, usually a P3 screens all the risks of the project, like in technical, legal, financial, and allocate it to the service, to the best party able to manage it. So for example, legislative risk, if the private sector is to take it, they said, "Sure, we can take it," but they will put a price tag.
Be expensive.
And the price tag then doesn't make it yours. It's why, whereas if the owner is best able to manage its risk, it's considered cheaper. So that's why a lot of the structure in any special team of, for any skills that's required to sell out the P3 is about allocation of risk and pricing to this. And ideally, you get to the best of those worlds as an entity.
As you go through the process, these things will become self-evident as you do the analysis. And I'll give you another great example. Doing a tunnel project in Miami next to the water, okay? And they said, "Sure, we can price during construction hurricane risk, all right? But it's going to be way expensive." And we said, "Well, as a government agency, we're used to having damage from hurricanes and we always can ask for federal assistance. So we generally have gotten that, so we'll take that risk," okay? So those are the kind of things as you go through the analysis, they pop up, you make decisions. And like I said, 95% of them are pretty self-evident as you go through and analyze.
Right, who should, or is best able to bear.
Exactly. But some of them are going to be, some of them are going to be policy decisions, okay? About who controls tolls, who controls rate setting. Those are policy decisions that the public owner and their constituencies have to go through and make decisions about.
Excellent. Thanks, Lola. Before we leave, I just, so it sounds like what you're saying here is that, and you've made a couple of comments, I'm just going to put it basis down on the playing field here, so to speak. It's important you get this, the FIS process in a way. And am I hearing you correctly that somewhere during that process timeline of completing it, that the P3 type of narrative will start to come to the surface and you'll start seeing what positions the port in the best negotiating position? To be able to turn around and say, "Okay, so here's what we're looking for, for a partner." And you've given us about half a dozen different narratives up there on what that partnership could look like. Is that a fair, kind of absurd? Is that, is that a fair, I'm kind of sort of mentally trying to figure out, so how long, that's the biggest question people ask me, so how long is this going to take?
Right.
And my, and my response has been, well, ten years or less.
Well, and we'll, and we'll go through some of this in the questions as well and explore in more detail.
Okay.
Uh, so I think as we go through this, a lot of this is going to come to the surface as we get to the questions, so.
Part of the answer is, how much time are we going to allow for industry engagement, back and forth? You can say, look, we're pretty clear on what we want, we want your input, you've got three months, there you go. Or you could say, we're just open-ended, we want a dialogue, we want to hear your thoughts, we'll go back, and you can do that for years.
Right. And, and trust me, the industry and open forums are typically less willing to share because it's competitive issues for them. But you can set up processes where you can sit down with the industry one-on-one and have conversations and they'll be very honest with you. They'll tell you what their concerns are, what their ideas are, as long as you can protect that as part of your process. What do you mean, do you have other questions?
Yeah, uh, maybe we can ask, uh, the elected officials, is there any, anything about this that you have a question about? Okay. So am I driving the question?
Yeah, let's get to the, the remote.
So the first category of just general.
Hold on a second, we'll get it up there.
Right.
Okay, good. I'm not seeing what you guys are saying, okay?
We've already begun to touch on some of the general ones and some specifics. Uh, so the Port of Good River is a public owner. Uh, we're, uh, like to say the fifth largest port in Oregon, but not a giant, we're not a large entity, a specific geographic focus and a specific, yeah, pretty, pretty typical operating budget. So as a public owner, and you can answer this, to general public owners or more specifically to a, an entity this size, um, what are making a decision about the best procurement, what's one of the factors that we should, this commission should be looking at?
Well, I'll, I'll start. Uh, number one is where your project goals. If your project goals are very specific and you know what you want to do, as David talked about earlier, you can move to a procurement approach quicker. Uh, at this point, you've done a lot of analysis based on what I'm hearing, so that one's pretty clear. The second is your comfort level with what approach you're willing to, are you open to everything or do you want to limit some things that as you go through this from a policy level, are you going to limit some things like, do I want to still maintain control over toll rates is one big one, okay? And you have to go through your comfort level. Also, some public owners, they don't want to do a P three, okay? Or they don't have the legal authority to do a P three. So those kind of analysis are key things that you have to go through, um, to ensure you have the legal authority and you have the comfort level with looking at the overall. The other is industry interest, okay? What is your industry saying to you? What are they comfortable delivering and what are they comfortable proposing on to deliver a best value for you as a public owner? Um, the final thing I would say is, do you have a funding plan? Okay? And the industry is going to be looking for that, that's going to be their first question. Their first question is going to be, how are you going to pay for the project? So they're going to say, are you willing to raise tolls to do that? Are you expecting money from other areas? How are we going to pay for that project?
So to add on to that, most public agencies start with, we're low starting, design bid build, been using it for a hundred years, not broke, why fix it? Can we afford to do that? That's the first question.
Good. Philippe, anything else?
So, yeah, I agree. Before making a, a, a decision about procurement, there's a lot of homework to do and potential, regardless of the delivery approach, um, and especially actually if it's a, a, a P three, um, this, having done the right homework on the legal side, financial side, technical side, on everything basically, gives comfort to, to the market. When, uh, Laura was referring to the question, is there any money to pay for the project? Uh, from a market point of view, many private entities, meaning by that investors, contractors, have gone into some projects only to find out homework wasn't done or there were no money. And actually, that the owner thought free money would come from, you know, from, from Evan. So that's, that's an issue that, that, uh, private companies try to, when, when they look at projects, there are a lot of projects going on in the U.S. and in the world because it's also actually international market. They want to know, before we invest resources, looking at the project, is it actually going to happen? So they do a smell test to see, okay, is the project going to happen? And the more comfort they are, the more willing they will be to invest upfront to also get themselves prepared to do the best proposal for it and therefore have the best competition and the best deal for everyone.
Well, and keep in mind, from the industry's perspective, it takes money to put proposals together. A design bid build, fairly inexpensive to do, you give them full plans, they can bid them out, you go to a pull P three, they can spend several million or more just preparing and putting together the information for the proposal.
In most of the projects that you do, does the public entity bring forward some level of equity or funding themselves into the mix or is a lot of it?
It, it depends on the project. Um, there, there are projects, many of them across the country today are what we would call a mix of where you would have some public funding and you would have toll revenue or some other particular revenue source coming into that project. Because big projects are complicated and they typically take what I call the kitchen sink to fund them. Very seldom today do we see big projects with one funding source, uh, do everything. So you have to kind of go through an evaluation and I can promise you, if you do your toll revenue analysis and you come up and you say, my project's here and my toll revenue's here, you know, everybody's going to say, where's the difference coming from and are you, public owner, providing that to me? Um, so otherwise, you're going to have to give me the ability to raise the tolls or do some, something to close that, that difference.
And potentially in this project is going to be the first question.
Yes.
People will look at, okay, how, how are you going to pay?
Now, just, just to set, kind of set the stage for other questions, but how, when you say the P three market, the, the market that would be interested in a project like this, are we talking a dozen entities, fifty entities, I mean, just generally?
Well, it depends, depends on the structure.
Sure.
Uh, if, if you do what's called an availability payment approach, uh, for a project of this size, I would suspect you're going to have at least five, if not more, maybe ten.
Availability payments are low risk, government's paying money.
It's a lower risk, so, so you're going to have every bridge builder out there that's going to put a team together and they're going to show up and they're going to compete. For a revenue risk project, that number gets much smaller. So, and I'll give you an example, in Colorado, they've just done two, two P three projects. The first one was revenue risk. They started out with three, they had two proposed. They did an availability payment of project, they started out with a dozen, they shortlisted four and all four proposed. So very competitive.
But also in, in Colorado, the latter project was a billion two and each of the four bidders had several equity participants. So if we're talking about the real privatization, that sort of low end, the, the continuum that Lowell alluded to, that number has gotten much bigger in recent years. It used to be dominated by equity attached to construction companies and now it's pension funds. And I would say the number of parties interested in a project like this has doubled in the past two years. And that's largely a function of they don't have good places to invest fixed income.
Right.
Canadian pension funds would all want to look at this.
And they're, they're very comfortable with infrastructure projects.
And I know that the square is along the name of the national, what, in general?
Corey invests on behalf of pension funds. So like I have them and other names I could throw up, it's not their money. The, the real barometers, are the pension funds interested in this and are they going to do it collectively or are they going to compete with one another?
Yeah, just to put it in terms, you're talking developer, your developer is the one that's going to develop the project. There's a lot of developers, okay? Then you're going to have your investors. Some developers do both, they invest and develop. Others are investors that partner with developers and do investment that goes forward. And then you have construction companies, some in the U.S., more internationally, also have equity funds as part of their construction company and sometimes they'll invest as part of the developer, uh, as well. So it's, it's a fast evolving and growing market in the U.S. and it's getting more mature. So you, you would have competition, but again, the level of that's going to depend on how you structure.
So right now, I'm advising on a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar, two-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar, very close, rail bridge in St. Louis. They took, you know, qualifications from their contract and they shortlisted six firms qualified to build the bridge. So we know there's six firms qualified to build bridges, there's more than that.
There's more than that.
So then the question becomes, how many equity players want to compete in this? Because the decision-making is always driven by the money, always, and the risk.
Can I ask David a question?
Sure.
David, I like that idea, what you're talking about, the equity investor, uh, can that, if you have an equity investor, then there, if the, if actually, if the volume goes down, basically all it is is just their rate of return goes down, it's not like where you have, where you borrowed the money and you have to make the money back up to make the payment on it. So if you have an equity investor, is that a much more stable investment for the people that are actually going to use the, the range here of the facility?
It depends how you structure the contract. There are equity investors who are in there because they want to sell in three years.
Right.
And if you, if you insist in the contract, our equity can't leave for ten years, then it's more stable. But there is a notion out there in the market, oh, I have equity, therefore they're patient and we've seen time and again, they were patient for about two years until they could sell it a profit and then they're out.
But then you have investors or equity investors are, are in for the long term, like the pension invested in them are expecting longer investments, so they're specialists.
And I would put, put equity investment in three groups. Group number one is venture capital, okay? And these are, are the people that are going to come and pursue the project at their own risk, that's venture capital. The second gets into the development risk and that's when you have a project that's moving forward and they're taking the risk of competing, okay, against two, three, four people. And then you get into the equity that is part of the project that is going to be there during the term of the project, which is typically lower risk.
Now, and as to that, there's equity, don't even, won't even look at it until it's already in operation, wants to buy out of other records.
Right. They're, they're the people, they don't want to go through any of that development risk, okay? They don't want to go through any of that construction risk, they want to just pick it up like.
Let's go to the next, next question here. Before you touched on some of these though, Philippe, this is a, where procurement, procurement for us is still a sort of undefined terms, that RFP is a RFQ is a, the point at which you accept an solicitor's proposal, but depending on how you define it, what, what steps would an agency like ours or typical public agency involve?
That's a good point. Uh, so what's the signal to, what, what's, what is the start of a procurement? One can say, um, you've started the project, you, the fact that you've started years ago looking at the project, the different, uh, starting on the D I S and so on, you've basically started gathering information about, uh, deal with the bridge and the replacement of the bridge. So one can say effectively procurement has started because you've been, you're working on it. Then more officially, I would say the start of procurement, um, started when the, I don't know, I would say, yeah, RFI or when the team, like the O C H R, which is a procurement O C H R, is started and then this team will launch a procurement by issuing a notice.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's don't use short terms. Request for information, okay, is where you basically send out a notice to the industry and say, tell me who's interested, give me your ideas, okay? Uh, you can also do an industry forum, uh, where you can stand up, say, this is our project, this is what we're thinking, give us your input and typically as part of that, you would do one-on-one meetings with interested teams. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, you're right.
But, yeah.
And I would add to that, the industry experience is still mostly at the state level and we all could throw out numbers of examples, we'd like this project as a P three. We will start an industry engagement and that either at the RFI stage or in before that, it gets killed, usually politically, often because of tolls. Uh, I was working on a project in Massachusetts, we had an industry, uh, event, two-hundred people come in, we're going to do this toll project and there was a new governor who's going to bring in a new cabinet and the project's, uh, indefinitely hold. The advantage here for you all is, I hope, you're not very political, you just want to get your bridge built. And so your external risk of somebody coming in and saying, no, we're not going to do it that way is much lower than if you're at the state level.
If I could for, I'm sorry, an RFI, if one were to issue an RFI presumably, and based on past experience, you get a number of folks to say, yeah, I'm interested, but you, you don't get a lot of actionable intelligence or specific approaches because a, an entity would not want to reveal their particular.
If it's public, that's correct.
You'd be surprised though, they, they will put time into this.
Because they want to get the public.
If you get an idea of whether the industry wants to do this based upon the quality of the RFI responses, like again, Lowell, I would give you examples, you will learn through that process.
Yes.
And it's dependent upon what questions you ask and.
Right.
So, that's, that's a crisis.
If they just put in, here's who we are, here's how many things we've built, we'd like to do your project, that doesn't tell you they really want to do your project.
Right.
If you get thoughts about design, procurement approaches, here's a creative way to, you know, make tolls work without impairing your local traffic, they're getting into it.
He gets that detail, huh?
Yes.
It, it depends. I mean, uh, some, as David said, some entities are going to give you the basic, what we would call the marketing spill, others are going to give you more thought about the project. Uh, and that, that, as David indicated, tells you more interest. Uh, the industry forum will do the same if you do the one-on-one sessions. Um, and you can get, the, the nice thing I like about those is you can actually interact with them, uh, as you're sitting there and get questions and it's in more of a closed setting where you can interact and hear from them confidentially.
If you were me, how would you go about this?
Right, that's right.
An RFI, generally speaking, in your experience, an RFI is successful, it could be a successful to, to test the market.
And it's also valuable in determining whether you're going down the wrong path. I mean, I know one project right now, they're going down the wrong path and I hope they do an RFI because otherwise they're going to waste a lot of money asking proposals that are not going to happen.
But it's a fine balance as well because, um, I agree with you, at some, at some point you need to start this request for information, but first, again, the homework has to be done to have a meaningful discussion. Because at the same time, when you start an RFI, uh, request for information, you start the procurement, so you send a signal to the market, all right, the bridge, something's going to happen here. So people will look at it and they've been burned many, many times through an RFI, they put, they engage, it was very positive, something's going to happen, but two years later, nothing. And people, again, it's a sprinter, they, they, the key concern is, if we invest time and effort in this project, is it actually going to reach to construction?
So to tie some of this together, sort of anticipating your questions, an RFI is done to lead to an RFP. The RFI typically ends up in a shortlist. We've got so many RFIs, we'd go into this knowing, typically, again, industry experience, we want four firms competing, that's the right number. And if we do an RFI, we intend to come back to the industry and say, you four are now serious candidates, we're going to let you do a real proposal, you're going to have to spend real time and money, we're going to deliver a project. Then the question becomes, can we do that or when can we do that in the context of our environmental?
Right.
And it depends upon how complicated your environmental review is. There's no simple answer.
And the key there on the environmental review is, I've done projects that didn't have fishing wildlife, coast guard, those kind of things, they could go under a state process and move much quicker because they weren't interested in federal funds, okay? You're going to have to go through a federal process regardless because this is an admissible waterway, you've got wildlife in the, in the waterway, you've got a lot of. waterway, you've got wildlife in the waterway, you've got a lot of things to consider here. So the question is, you're going to have to do that much anyway, do you want to go ahead and get it federally eligible so you could ask for federal funds? The other nice thing you get about federal eligibility is they have nice loan programs that can be available either to you as the public owner or to the private entity, that most P3s in the United States of any size use those loan programs.
Well, I think we're going to get to that question that we're over.
If we narrowed down to three or four candidates, what do they expect from the port? What do they expect for us to be ready for, and to have in hand at that point?
Well, I wouldn't say we're at our next question.
Can I make a quick one?
I think, and I'm sure your boss would agree as well, is before moving to a procurement stage, what's important in the preparation is to have strong project champion. I think the successful projects in the market are always driven, are always successful because there's someone ready to take, to pick the fights, political fight, whether they are to champion and hold the project regardless of what's going on. And this is, we've seen it, it's critical on any procurement.
The other thing that project champion has to do, I've been that before as a public owner, is you have to make and resolve timely issues on risk discussions and be able to keep the process moving. Because again, you have to keep the interest of the private sector, and you have to resolve these issues timely, because they are going to come up, and you have to work through those and have a project champion that has the breadth to be able to get those decisions made.
Could you see the port as that champion?
I could, I could, but the thing you have to keep in mind with this project is you're interacting with other partners, so you're going to need a champion that can work through the ODOT process, that can work through the Washington DOT process, and make sure those things are getting done timely.
Do you see that as a contractor to the port?
No, no, as a by-state project, you're going to need more than one champion.
Yeah, I think, it's a judgment, but really the port has, I think, a strong team through Michael and Kevin. And from my experience, it's relatively rare to have a team that prepared at this stage of the port, that's a personal comment, but which is a really good step. And then, and I don't know exactly how it works, is a political, really is a political reach in Washington, in Oregon, at federal level, like someone, or maybe the number of people who will politically carry the project, get the grants, to get the money.
And in the case, you know, I want to go back to what Michael put up earlier on his work chart, that could be your advisory, potentially, that helps work through those issues in a timely manner, where, when you come up with a Washington state issue or an Oregon state issue that you have to work through and get decisions on.
All right, so here's, now we're at federal government setting into a federal highway administration, but environmental clearance is pretty darn important. We have projected a two-and-a-half to three-year process for EIS. I've had people say, boy, that you can go a lot faster than that. And I've said, I don't think so, maybe you can go two and a half to a quarter, but this is a new project, different project, but they're all different, but what do you?
Well, I mean, the good news is, you've done a draft environmental impact statement, it is dated, it's going to have to be updated. You've also done your evaluation of your delivery approach for the bridge project, okay, you call that your TSNL.
Well, that was just type, size, and locations, that was more specific to a little.
Right, but that's part of the process. So now you're getting into your regulatory agencies and those, and I just got to be blunt with you, that's a little bit of a crap sheet on timing, okay? Some federal agencies will move fast, others may not move so fast, and you don't have a ton of leverage to force them to give you answers. Does that make sense? Because they're the federal agencies, and trust me, they're going to ask questions, they're going to have comments. Now, the good news is, you've been through a draft environmental impact statement, so you know what a lot of those questions are going to be. And hopefully, that's going to shorten that process. I think depending, the one thing they have to decide is what's called a class of action. And a class of action decides how long that process is going to be and what you have to do in the process, okay? If it's an exclusion, it can go quickly. And an exclusion typically is where you're moving in the same zone that the existing project exists, you're not outside that zone, you're not really impacting anything else. Well, unfortunately, you're going to have to move, because the bridge is there. So you're going to have to move at least a little bit. So you're going to have some impacts there that you're going to have to evaluate, so they're probably not going to do a categorical exclusion. Then you get to the second level, okay, and then the third level, and each level requires more time and analysis. And that's kind of what your team is going to start having those conversations with the federal agency and say, hey, I need your advice on this to help guide me on what class of action you're considering here that's going to help decide what that timeframe's going to be. So you could, in an exclusion, you could do those in six to eight months, okay? But you get to the things you're doing, you're probably, and I heard you say two years, you're probably looking at two years, maybe longer.
If I could add, just on bridge experience, the biggest problem with bridges has been opposition, that's what holds it up. The Columbia River Bridge Crossing, which I was involved with, and one of the biggest things was, is it going to have rail? The good news is, the Tappan Zee Bridge had the same issue, we're going to have rail at the Tappan Zee Bridge, and the state caught a deal with Westchester County, that would be phase two, take it off the table. Then they used the federal dashboard, which is a little bit of a technical term, but they went from the request for the FBI S to a rod in 18 months for the Tappan Zee Bridge. Now, that is a big project, with everybody pulling in the same direction. So as Will said, it depends, but the process is real clear, get on the same page as the region.
Right.
Then you go see USDOT and say, we'd like to be on the dashboard. That gets you expedited.
So what, to what extent does the project owner drive the EIS, and to what extent do the cities and counties and states that also touch this project have to be involved?
The project owner drives the process. The cities and counties are commoners, they're essentially part of your public involvement process, so they're going to provide that input to you, but the owner of the project is the one that drives that process. You're responding to the comments, you're resolving the comments, you're coming up with a mitigation strategy.
And you're responsible for getting ahead of the comments.
That's right.
You go meet with the cities before you ask for comments, right, so they don't comment.
And what you can do in the public involvement process is you go in and you lay out for them, this is what we're thinking, okay, give me your thoughts. And then when you get to the process of the formal process, you've already had that interaction, and you can get that, through that pretty quickly.
Seems like something that would be your advisory, entire process getting, because that policy advisory committee would.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, you've got the right idea.
Mayor Blackford, back there.
Thank you, Mike, question. You listed a whole range of ways to get to a new bridge, from not too much private involvement to quite a bit of private involvement. Would this EIS be the wrong step for any, we're not going to wish, whoops, we should have done something else as a first step, EIS first, regardless of how we end up getting our bridge?
You have to do the EIS to do the bridge.
And it's the long, it's the long stick, it's the critical path.
Because you have federal interaction in your bridge, you don't have a choice.
Thank you.
And I would assume whether or not we do AP3 would not substantially change the nature of the EIS. We may decide to do a design building.
Well, I would, I would say potentially, there's a couple of things you could do.
It's a couple of things.
The federal agencies right now are setting up, he mentioned this dashboard process, they're essentially saying, if you want to do a P3 in advance for a project, we will work with you to expedite the federal part of this, okay, from USDOT, and they may be able to work with other federal agencies. So they may raise the thought process and give it a little more resources, potentially. The second thing, kind of, you have to get into is really, you can do a concurrent process, but you need the OK to do that. They have what they call a special experimental program that they've used, I've actually gone through this before, where you can start your procurement during the environmental phase, as long as you don't do your contract and your final selection until after the environmental is approved. So you can, you can do that concurrent, so you're not doing, oh, I'm going to do my record decision, then I'm going to do my procurement, does that make sense? So you cut that time down.
And it hasn't caused issues with the contract, or something pops up in the EIS that ended up costing a lot of money?
Well, that's why typically what you're going to do is you're going to start that towards the middle to the end of that process, and that's kind of what we've been saying, you need the comfort level. And trust me, as you get into the final environmental impact, you're going to know, you already know a lot from your draft documents of what's out there. So you have a pretty good idea of what's out there, and then the question's going to be, has conditions changed? Are things new or different today? Because you are going to have to update it. And are you expecting any opposition? Because as David indicated, it's really opposition, because they can file in court to slow the process down. So, you know, it could be an environmental group, it could be someone that doesn't like where the bridge is going to end up, it could be any number of things that are going to have questions about that.
So I think that's the end of the general considerations. So Mayor Blackford, special, can you, like, official question?
I guess I like what I'm hearing here, I've got a question for David, when you run a Tappan Zee Bridge, I guess, I go on back to a long time ago with Robert Moses and what he did, you know, developing the Triborough Bridge Association. Coming from Washington, you know, and I'm listening here, and it sounds like it's an Oregon project, and I'd like to see it in Oregon/Washington project. Is there any way that we can, you guys can start it, but then we form a bridge authority or a, or a bridge district, and that way we have the support of both the Washington legislatures, we have people that we can lobby with and to do that, and we have, you know, a bridge authority that's actually the, ends up being the ownership of that, which then gives people in Washington a feeling that, yeah, we have some ownership into this, rather than it just being an Oregon-based bridge coming over. Just something to think about, and.
It's been done, it will take more time, and you can certainly see the benefits, but if you do want to do a by-state authority, you have to have acts of both legislatures and then an act of Congress. Now, I don't know who would oppose this, but you actually need three.
Could it be all working at the same time?
Ideally, sure, yeah.
But I can tell you from doing those kind of things in the past, they don't generally happen overnight, so.
But if you have a rod of a great.
Why?
Have you seen Congress move quickly?
But I have to ask why, I mean, that's a good, I mean, if you look down the path on this.
The question would be, do you have a congressional member that has standing in a particular committee that matters?
That's the FASO.
Okay?
Well, the FASO and the White House on the Senate Finance.
So that can carry, that can carry the weight of that, and can you also have legislators at the state level that can also carry the weight of that? And typically, what I found is, everybody agreed, and they wanted to move forward, but when they got to the point of finalizing legislation, it wasn't a priority for somebody, and it just got left to the next year.
There's always horse trading, I'll vote for this, if you'll vote for that, and then you're at 18 months of, why, where were we on this?
And it's not, it is ill-intent, it's just the process, it's the process.
This has happened before, this area has got its act together and focused on one project.
That's what I'm trying to get together, if we can focus on one project, I know the three legislators statewide on the Oregon, on the Washington side would definitely get behind it, and I know that Jamie Herrera would get on it, I believe Senator Cantwell would be very supportive of it.
So the one thing about, about doing that, Mayor, is if you do want to go that route, you don't start your industry engagement until you're done. They want no part of, we'll see you after Congress is approved.
So I just, okay.
Maybe it's spirit.
All right, so.
Before you talk about project financing, all these words, EIS and all, effectively it's homework preparation work, leads to evaluating the project delivery method. And because we talked about what starts a procurement, so RFI will indicate us, reaching to the market will provide additional information, but at some point, the port authority or the organ has to decide on route, which prefer routes of procurement or delivery method. And that will then impact the financing, that will impact a lot of other things. So pre, before starting the procurement, and would you guys talk about value for money and all this at some point?
I think we'll get to that.
It's important so that you, you know which delivery method.
But procurement, I mean, people have worked on this for a long time, but procurement in this context would mean when you are ready to go to the market, not with just whose interest is, but rather you know what you want, or know the bandwidth of alternatives, and you go to the market with some certainty, characterization of the project, so that the market sees credible public agency and project, and is willing to spend money on it. Is that right?
In my mind, wouldn't that mean you've taken all the unquantifiable risk out of it? For example, legislative approval in Washington?
Well, it depends, I mean, you could go under your structure today, and that would not be a risk that would be sitting there. However, you know, you can't take all quantifiable risk out, what you want to do is minimize it. So it just comes down to your comfort level of where you want to end up. If you want to end up with a by-state authority, then as David indicated, that's going to take time, and the industry's probably going to go, eh, maybe we'll just kind of cool it for a while, until you get that put together. Or do you want to move forward as before today, as you exist today, or do you want to give ownership to someone else? So that's.
How do you see us not being a by-state authority since the bridge is in two states?
Well, there are a lot of bridges that are done across state lines, it really comes down to, is the toll point on the Oregon side? It is today. So from the P3, all they need on the other side is a permit, okay? They need a permit to build the bridge there from the state of Washington, and they need a permit to connect to the state highway. So then it becomes a permit process, does that make sense? So if you keep the toll point on this side, then it's an Oregon decision about the toll, and you can make that, because if you put that into the structure, that's what they're going to want to know, do you have control of that? So.
Back to financing.
It is generally back to.
All right, well, let's move on. So project finance, pretty important topic, now we're getting into some specifics, David, this is.
Yeah, and I was going to, I thought I'd take the lead on this, and I think this is a very useful discussion, I actually think this is less useful. So I'm going to return some of my time back to the chair, and say, yes, there are financing mechanisms available, we're all experts on this. If we want to use a federal loan program, we need to be federalized, we've already said we have to be federalized. We're very familiar with their underwriting criteria, we think you will qualify. I would point out the TIFIA program, which is what you would use, is limited, it's statutory, only half of the project cost, but in practical, they just don't want to do that, they'll only do a third, and you would apply for a third of this as a TIFIA loan. Process-wise, they've gotten pretty good, you could probably go from application to a close in a year. Good thing to know. Fred and I started this last spring on what could the port do under their existing indenture, et cetera, and you can't build this bridge that way. So why, you know, why spend a lot of time talking about it? That's one of the reasons we're here, is the design bid build, we're going to do this the old-fashioned way, we're not at 100%, but we're probably about 99% assurance, that's not going to work. So, yeah.
You just don't have the capacity.
You just don't have the capacity. And one of my other questions is, you know, what are the factors on a toll revenue bond project? It's pretty clear, it's your tolling policy. And so again, part of the dialogue we've had is, can, could you do this conceivably with our existing traffic at different toll rates? And the answer is, only if you're willing to go to a toll rate that is going to be unacceptable to your local community, and I don't think you are. So let's get realistic there, what you really want to focus on is, what can we do with toll rates that won't upset, you know, the local community and makes us attracted to put a potential private one there?
And then the question comes to the next one, which is, where are you going to come up with additional money? You know, and if you're federally eligible, you can apply for federal grants, you can pursue some of the discretionary programs, they have a freight program, they have what's called a Tiger program, okay? They're not going to solve. Okay, they're not gonna solve, generally a hundred million plus gap. So I guess at the end of the day, the question starts coming down, is a community willing to come up with additional money? Or are the state levels in Washington and Oregon, at a point, they feel this bridge is important enough to them, they're willing to help put part of the money towards it?
And just again, to give you context, we weren't having this conversation twenty years ago. Back then, if you wanted to build a replacement bridge, eighty percent of the funds was coming from USDOT. It was eighty percent federal, twenty percent local, it worked for a long time. It's not coming back. And that's why we're talking about this. It used to be the federal government provided most of the funds. They're not, and that's not gonna change.
And that's what I'm talking about, the kitchen sink approach. Is it's really gonna take probably contributions from everywhere you can get it, to, to finish out the bridge project funding plan. And that, to me, is a question of how long is that gonna take? So, you know, 'cause you know how long it takes to go through a congressional session, or a legislative session, or even local decision-making about potential revenue sources locally, so those don't happen overnight.
And part of what you would do in this development period is, okay, where can we get creative to get some more money? Couple of quick, when I started E470 back in the eighties, we came up with the concept that within the jurisdictions that we're gonna run this road in, we're gonna have a vehicle registration fee. We're gonna charge ten bucks every time you register your car. It was critical to get in that road bill, ten dollars every time. Last year they got rid of it. You know, it took them a long time, but it's gone. But it was, it was critical by showing the local governments were willing to do something.
And it did sunset.
And it, it did sunset. We could sell the name of the bridge, you know? I don't know how much it's worth, I brought, we've all brought this up at some point. But you have to say, okay, how many ideas can we have on this list, and how many don't get knocked off in our first meeting?
You know, and Portland area has done some fairly unique types of things, as far as payroll issues and other things that they've done. Help fund projects within the local community up there. So, you know, that's the kinda thing you have to go through, that evaluation and discussion and analysis to see, one, are these, and I do this a lot in my practice, you, you go through and you figure out, what are these options that are there? You narrow them down to what can get done, what's realistic to get done, what can it generate? And then you narrow it to the point of, alright, these are the four or five we're really gonna focus our time and attention on.
David, just drill down a little bit on your comment, try to understand it. If this, the nut of it is, hey, this, this project can't be done without a combination of grant. That doesn't require a return, and private money or toll.
I didn't say that, now.
Well, you said, is it ninety-nine percent sure that you can't do this?
Strictly off of traditional toll revenue bonds.
Which, which means, that's the toll revenue we got. If we get to a level that's acceptable to the local community, is that gonna be enough to capitalize?
There's another aspect to this.
But keep in mind, I don't wanna stop here, but with a P3, a traditional revenue bond for tolls are thirty-year bonds. With a P3, you can go longer. Okay, so you may be able to go fifty years, you may be willing to go longer than that. Say the bridge lifespan is seventy years, maybe you go seventy years. That gives them more time, okay? So that during that time period, your capacity may go up more. So depending on what you do with your toll rates during that time period. So those are the kinda things that also you would evaluate. Now, at the end of the day, is that still gonna fund the project? It may not.
So I guess where I wanna interject is, I guess what I'm hearing from the industry, there's a whole slew of infrastructure debt that's going out there at forty-plus years.
Yes.
Today.
Yeah.
So the old model of twenty and thirty-year revenue bonds, when it comes to infrastructure, it's shifting.
There are longer-term bonds being done.
So when you shift that term, right, then what it does is allow you not to have, it starts to normalize your toll rate.
It helps. The other thing that, to Michael's question, is when we structure debt, we wanna know that we've got this much revenue to cover this much debt service. That's where the equity comes in, right? We, if it's not grants, I never say grants, but equity will take, okay, well, we're expecting there's gonna be some excess, and that's ours. And that's ours for a long time, and it may go up and down, but that's where the equity can fill that gap.
So the equity's taking the risk of that.
Equity's taking that risk.
And they really do, but wouldn't they, wouldn't the hurdle rate be?
Very good question. It used to be twelve percent. Now it's about half that.
So you can get long-term equity taking the risk, the revenue risk, at six percent?
I, I haven't seen it at six percent.
That Indiana toll road equity isn't gonna get anywhere near five percent.
Yeah, but that's Indiana toll.
It depends on the project, but yeah, that's the point.
Depends on the project.
And the hurdle rate has come down quite a bit.
In the situation where there is continued growth expected, they're more willing to take a lower rate of return. If it's more kinda like this, or it's slow growth, then they're probably gonna demand a higher rate of return.
And the question is, how long?
Right.
Because we might have forty-year debt, but you might have a sixty-year concession. Yeah, these are, we're getting into the weeds, but you get the idea.
And can they close that gap? You kinda have to go through some analysis on that, to, to evaluate it, because trust me, you can run scenarios. I mean, we've run them on the private side, you can see what they look like out there, and you can run scenarios to see how much that could generate. Maybe it gets there, maybe it doesn't, maybe you still need some additional money.
Which variable is the toll rate? I mean, it's traffic volume, but it would have relatively fixed or known.
Michael, it is, but toll rates in any traffic and revenue form will tell you this, come down to affordability, and what the public's willing to pay. So, so you can, you can only assume so much growth in toll rates before people start saying no. Either politically, or they say, no, I won't use it, I'll figure out an alternative. Okay, I'll get a job on the other side, okay, or they'll just change, I'll make less trips.
And for this project, you're gonna be able to take larger trucks, how many more trucks might cross because of that? That's an unknown.
That's an unknown.
Very good. So we're still on the financing section. Do you feel like you've covered this? The federal eligibility, if you can pull up, you can clarify that for us.
I think it's just a matter of, if you don't get full approval from the feds, you can't get a dime from them, and you cannot borrow any money from them.
So that's TFI loans. Vasps. Grants for grants. Tiger grant.
But ninety-something percent of that is the record decision. It's the internal.
And you're, you're gonna have to go through that because of core engineer, because of fish and wildlife, you're gonna have to get those anyway, so you might as well get that check box with Federal Highway Administration.
Well, I think we've kinda covered this, so you think, private activity.
Yeah, I do.
So maybe just, just define that, so we play a private activity.
Private activity bonds, which almost died in this, in this tax bill, allow a private developer to issue bonds that are exempt from state and local tax for a governmentally-owned project. So if you do one of these concessions, you own it, you lease it. So we all think it's owned by those guys, and practically it is, but legally it's owned by a public entity. And if they're doing the work, they can issue tags and bonds. That's how ninety percent of these projects are getting done.
So that's, that's a form of an escrow revenue bond?
Close enough.
Kinda close to that, but the difference, Michael, is USDOT has an allocation, they can allocate to you. They have a cap, but they can allocate it to you. Whereas otherwise, you'd have to go to the state and get part of their cap allocation, which is difficult. An industrial development bond, you have to do that. So in this case, you could get it to USDOT. Now, again, USDOT's gonna require you to spend one dollar, at least one dollar of federal funds on the project.
Which is highway funds, so you would use that on one of the approaches.
So you're probably already there, with things you've already done.
We were.
Yeah, I covered this.
Yeah, we kinda got that. I think we'll maybe revisit that, and then get into the pre-P3 section. Yeah, we kinda covered some.
Yeah, sorry, the key difference is generally bringing equity to the table. And availability payment, which we didn't really go in this much, availability payment, Lowell described it, we didn't say, by the way, you can't afford that either. Availability payment, you don't need much equity, there's just not a lot of risk. Government's paying you this much every year, you know, it sounds like an obligation. So you would see equity of like three to ten percent. And a traditional revenue risk, the equity is gonna be sort of on the range of twenty to fifty percent.
Wasn't that the model where the port maintained tolling authority?
It does.
Yes. And risk was down, I think risk was low.
Well, the risk to the financing goes down.
Okay.
To the other guy, to the other guy.
Cause that's, that's a guarantee, it says that the toll revenues are sufficient to meet that.
You'll use other port resources.
Or, you know, there's some of their backstop at some point.
Yeah, you don't have one.
And we're assuring that we backstop it. It's a big risk on the public side.
Big risk on the public side.
Sorry, this is naive, but what's equity? You said twenty percent of equity, what's that actually mean?
Equity is, is someone who's putting money into the project and has an uncertain return. A bond or a loan always has a set term, you gotta pay me so much every year for so many years, that's a loan. Equity is, I'm giving you this much, and whatever's left, that goes to the bottom of what we call flow of funds, but you know, that's all mine. I'm the owner.
Who would do that?
Depends on the risk. Now, there's a lot of people that would do that.
For why? For what, what's the incentive?
Well, their incentive is to make money.
Yeah, they're, they're buying US.
Maybe they make money, maybe they make nothing.
That's right.
But a lot of them are willing to take that risk. And essentially what they would say is, I'm willing to assume this area's gonna grow, I'm willing to assume that we can raise the toll rates over time, within whatever authority you give me, and that the public will continue to pay that. So they're, they're willing to take those risks.
And we'd expect that portion to be at a higher interest rate than a TFI loan.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
I got a, I got a question for us. So we're, we're looking at these rates of returns on private equity. So you build a three-hundred-million-dollar bridge, the port can't use the depreciation. What value is that back to the, the nut?
Nut.
Well, no.
I mean, there's no, there's no way to tool that?
There, there, there is, within limitations, it's difficult.
Not affected. But in, in early years of this industry, it was thought you could sell off the depreciation, and it failed. It just doesn't exist. So depreciation as a benefit of using privatization, Lowell may feel differently, I say as a fallacy, it's not there.
It's a minimum. I mean, you, you can get some depreciation out of it, but it happens over such a long period on the infrastructure.
Is that the life cycle of the, of the asset?
And they do these investments through special purpose vehicles, it's not like IBM comes in and does this, they can use to pre, it's special purposes, they're set up so they don't pay taxes.
See, for me, it would be a good stimulus to.
To make it.
Make it happen.
Yeah, take that up with Washington, good luck. Put that in the next tax bill.
Okay, well, I guess we, we've touched on it a lot, but they are the public-private partners.
Do you wanna go to elected officials in the media?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Any elected officials? Any questions on it? Mr. Denver?
So, and I think this fits into the financing versus P3, but right now there's a silly amount of cash on the private side out in the world, and it's not always gonna be true. Do we have a hot iron that needs to be struck? How does that, how does the current amount of cash out in the world influence how fast we do these steps?
Alright, well, that could take a really long answer. Part of the reason there's so much cash is because we've been in an interest rate environment now for, for eighteen years, where treasuries are yielding below four percent, which is taking funds, they pension funds, that we have got to diversify what we invest, and putting this money in government bonds is not paying our retirees what we expected it to pay them. If treasury rates go up to a point where when I was young, and I bought a treasury bond at thirteen percent, thought that was a pretty good, when that happens, then we will find less money available for these infrastructure investments. But it's gonna be so slow that the expediency under which you take this project is irrelevant.
Right. And, and the other point I would make is, if treasuries go to thirteen, thirteen percent, we got bigger problems.
And afford it.
Anyone else need Patrick, anyone there?
Yeah, I, I would ask, what level of importance is there to the form the bridge itself takes? In terms of, is it gonna have a bike ped crossing, something along those lines? Does that make it more attractive to certain investors?
If you're gonna toll them.
Yeah, if you're gonna toll. I, yeah, I don't think the design matters to.
That was, that was in jest, I, I obviously. But, but regardless, they will look at it as in amenity, and maybe it brings more traffic, okay? Maybe people are gonna come and use the bridge for, for biking and walking and those types of things, so maybe they're gonna come and drive the bridge. And we'll drive the bridge and pay tolls.
Yeah.
Cause maybe the parking's on one side and they're on the other, but from that perspective, I would say, it's that much? That's really more for you as a policy issue, for your board, as to what your expectation is and what your project goals are.
Well, and also, pretty political.
Absolutely.
One exception, when you say design, if you can stay out of the river, your environmental process just got a lot easier. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure we have an engineer here, but you can design a bridge to go across the Columbia River, which is built on the banks. That expedites things. So it, it does change the appetite, but not for the reasons you're thinking.
Well, there are some engineers in the room. Raise your hand, an engineer, and you think you can build a bridge without touching the water. We have a question.
Nobody raised their hand for that, I was raising my hand. The Porta Hood River's been running this bridge for sixty-something years. Doing a great job, thank you all for your service, you all get paid the same amount I get paid. Is it, is it obvious that the group that should build the new bridge is the Porta Hood River? Or, I mean, my citizens have a huge investment in this bridge functioning, the folks from N-Situ have a huge investment in this. I own a computer and I use a computer, but I don't build computers, I just use them. Is the port gonna build this bridge, or, or, or be the contracting entity that hires a P3? Or, or should it be a by-state or not-state, should it be a multi-agency authority?
Really, really, really a question for the community to decide. So, I mean, I, I don't know your laws specifically, I mean, I know where I come from, you can have joint state, joint partnership agreements. Those are allowed. You can create those that can underlie this, but at the end of the day, some governments got issued.
I want to process to go through, answering this question, what is the best process to consider the options and basic to have? Is it legal, is it?
Well, I mean, legal, legal is gonna be, I mean, it's a policy call to begin with. And then after that, it's a legal question of what does it take to do some of these options? I mean, to me, if you were gonna go with a P3, honestly, truthfully, I don't know that it matters.
The city could do it, I don't see any reason.
Yeah, yeah, a city.
I'm not sure there's many other options.
Well, but they have to have the rights to the bridge, to do that.
Well, if I could, let's, we got a bunch of questions on P3s, let's get into that, maybe roll back to that. So any other, any other questions, fellow politicians? Alright. We're going back over some of the old ground, but one of the most important factors for a successful project, always comes up, and we're very interested in, is those examples that you would point to with your experience, as being really good examples. I guess you could maybe kinda focus on ones that are about our tranche of size. This, the estimate in two thousand and fifteen, after TSNL was a two-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar project. So two thousand and ten or so dollars, I think. But, you know, escalate that out to two thousand and twenty-five to twenty-eight, maybe it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar project. Now maybe, and it's a kind of a fundamental question I keep thinking about, if it was a private entity doing this, and they had the permits in hand, and the legislative authority in hand, and they understood, and the geology had been fully characterized and all that, what would a public, a private entity bring to the table in terms of cost reduction? The way the legislation works, in Salem, the twenty-seven fifty, is that if it's all private money, then you essentially bypass public contracting. So you're entering into an agreement with an entity to build a bridge, and that entity does not have, they can bring their own contractor, they obviously bring their own money, and they can avoid. Obviously bring their own money and they can avoid or bypass typical prevailing wage rate requirement. So when you look at that and you look at other sorts of projects, what kind of, what does that reduce the cost? 20%, 10%? And I don't, I just leave that as a sort of a rhetorical question. But what would a private entity bring to the table that could reduce the cost or increase the revenue?
Well, a couple.
Lowell, if I could just say that within the context of these two questions, what are, what are good examples? And what are some examples that could work so well?
A couple of questions. One, do you think the bridge is going to be required to be built in federal standards?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if that's the case, then you've now limited some innovation. So if it doesn't have to be built to federal standards, you can put more innovation in it. So if you take $1 of federal money, then that's out the door or for some reason otherwise you have to do it to federal standard. I have seen many projects built that were not under federal requirements that the cost typically was 20 to 25% less. So, and the reason being is there's a lot of reasons that go into that. Buy America requirements for steel and for other factors that go into the project. A lot of people think that's a good requirement, okay?
And if you do a TFI loan, you get it anyway.
Right, you get it anyway. But if you get into that and you look at other projects, there are certain types of steel that aren't even made in the US anymore. So you have to kind of go around the bend and do different things just to get it under Buy America. So there's a lot of limitations in how markets have evolved over the years. Wage rate requirements, there's a lot of other things that come in. Again, some public entities say that's a great public policy. We think that's the way it should be, but those come with costs.
So I said absolutely, but it was primarily based on the national highway system designation for the current bridge and the future bridge. I can't imagine NHS bridge not being built to federal standards, but.
I agree. And I would caution taking any answer at face value to that question. It's dependent upon local conditions. You've never had a P3 here. I mean, the experience is all over the place. The one bridge I did, the bridge ended being an issue was an Italian subcontractor. They couldn't get enough qualified labor to do the bridge and the bridge was delayed and it had to be liquidated damages and who knows? Maybe that, that was, it was good for the public sector because it wasn't their risk. It was eaten by the private sector.
But I will say, I did a tunnel project I was project champion on. The public estimates were a billion and two. The bid came in at 610. So, you know, you just, you don't know until you go into the market.
Right. Don't extrapolate that to your bridge, please.
Well, we had a risk, we had a risk contingency built into it. That was 200 million. Even if you spent all of that, you were still well under a billion and two and they didn't spend all of it. So, so they came in a lot lower than what the experts, and we had two independent groups estimated, thought the project was going to cost. So contractors in many cases, particularly when you match design build together and you bring in these other elements of O&amp;M, they can get very innovative and very creative about how they're going to do these things. So, and sometimes maybe they can go out there and it takes less peers in the way they're doing it and it still meets all their requirements. Well, that's saving money. So as you go through this process, that's the creativity you're going to look for. And Michael, that's essentially why you want to talk to the industry. Is you want to hear from them to get some of those ideas. And trust me, when you sit down and talk to them, if they think they've got good ideas, they're going to look you in the eye and go, I think I can save you some money. They'll tell you that confidentially.
And the industry experience has been when you look at the winner, they had a better way. They had a better program.
That's exactly right.
What it was, well.
Could have been, I mean, one time it was a concrete road instead of an asphalt road. Another was staging, so they were able to accept. You know, they just came up with a better plan.
Right. And, and you know, depending on how you're going to structure this, a lot of these new segmental bridges, they do them offsite and they do it at a cheaper location and then they truck it in and they.
Loaded in.
Put it together like Legos. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do things that you can get creative about that. And maybe they can bring that cost down substantially.
So those are, you pointed out some good examples. What, describe a couple, maybe I'll turn to you, please, that you heard of or read of. I'm sure it's not a project you were involved with. Wrong or bad and why?
I, on this one, I had one I wanted to talk about, which, which is actually linked to a political change during procurement. It was George Mason Tunnel in Canada. Which basically was going through procurement with heavy investment from the leaders. And basically, the political challenge who has turned the project to be canceled by the province of British Columbia. Procurement got canceled and then it's in the province that would be, I think, estimated to be about $600 million at the time of the session. So that's a project where we talk about the procurement. That's a project where the political alignment was unfortunately not not as strong as it should have been in a way and therefore.
Most of the ones I've seen that have gone off the rails have been political changes where they started to. Those two have really been, I've seen a number of projects that started before the environmental was finished. And as they got into the environmental, issues came up and all of a sudden the project they were thinking they were going to do changed. And the industry kind of went, whoa, that was totally different than what we were expecting and it kind of stalled.
We have a project right now, the Purple Line in Maryland. It's a new commuter rail line. And very interesting, you had people, faulty people in Montgomery County didn't want a rail line and they waited until after there had been an award. Then they challenged the environmental saying, your assumptions of metro running properly are false. Metro's a mess. And they were right. Metro was a mess. And the judge said, well, metro's a mess, so we're going to make you guys go back and redo it. And now it's two years later and it's costing them hundreds of millions of dollars.
You know a project more close to home, but Tacoma Narrows project, I've heard it described in different ways. Do any of you know that project?
I was involved with that project and, yeah, I'm not happy about it.
What was happening?
Well, a couple of things happened. One is I got, I didn't get the business I was promised because somebody, another firm was close to the board, but that's not the story. The, the State Department of Transportation decided to do it through a P3 and marched down that path. And when they, literally, they had printed the offering statement to sell the bonds to fund the bridge. The legislator, head of the legislature said, why are we allowing this revenue bond? We can sell general obligation bonds and went past a bill killing the whole thing. And they did a design bid build. They just killed the whole thing and did it with general obligation bonds.
Your legislature interceded.
The lesson wasn't legislature interceding. The lesson was the staff didn't keep legislature posing as to what they were doing.
And what I would say, the lesson learned, the lesson learned, and I've seen this in many situations when you start out, is you have to really do outreach to the industries, to the community, to, a lot more outreach than you would do with a normal project that you're considering a P3 because they are going to be different and you are going to have some people here locally, they're going to come up and go, you're going to turn our bridge over to a private company? And trust me, they're going to go, whoa, I didn't know that. So it's getting that information out if you go in that direction. Because a project in Colorado, the first P3 they did got to right before they were doing financial close and some legislators went in and passed a bill that said the legislature would have to approve it before they did. Now, the governor ended up vetoing that, but it ended up into a huge battle collectively over it. And it was primarily because they didn't do that outreach. So the communications plan was what I would call a normal project communication plan. It wasn't that extra effort.
For example, my team is involved in a mobile river bridge in Alabama, which is a P3 project as well, revenue risk. And.
Absolutely. Can we just pick up?
Yeah, for sure. So my team is involved with a mobile river bridge in Alabama, which is $2 billion revenue risk bridge. Potentially, currently in procurement, but just a key thing when we started work, first thing we did was fast track hiring a public relations company. Reason being to work with the citizens to anticipate any opposition possible and most importantly to address people's concerns. Because typically, there've been this example in the US a few times, given, again, given that it's an international market. The Spanish companies have been very active because they were looking for projects. And people perceive that a project that has been won by a Spanish company means, for example, the bridge, the bridge is, belongs to Spain, the country. So you have extremely strong opposition of some people saying, what if there's a war with Spain? They own the bridge. And it's like, okay, it's surprising, but it means, okay, that's going to be headlines in the press. And so there is a lot of work, education work, which is very effectively basic, but to really help people understand the purpose, the value for the community, the, even including the process the port is going through to think about what is the best choice for the community, for taxpayers, for people who are going to be taught.
We all couldn't have discovered this more. You just have to be upfront with the game.
And Michael, in the second project Colorado did, they actually had focus group sessions in the communities where the project was going and they had them generally monthly. And said, anybody who wants to come and understand what we're doing out here. And it generated a lot of interaction. So not all of it was supported. And they had to learn that and go through it and discuss it with the local entities.
And the project went to Boulder, so just put it in context.
No, they're talking about an actual 70.
Oh, 70. Well, that was tough.
I just note that, to your point, the White Salmon Enterprise editorial, they've already editorialized in effect. And I don't mean to put words in the mouth, but P3, no way, no how.
Right.
And that's, and I think it just demonstrates that we're all collectively educating ourselves about the possibilities and risks. And maybe after a time, people will come to a different conclusion or maybe people will decide, no, this doesn't work. We're in the national scene here.
Right.
And if that bridge that we've all known and sort of loved, if it was perceived as owned by a Spanish company or that's private money that owns that thing, there's a sort of a perception issue. Some people don't.
And I think there is a lot of transparency to have and likewise, my understanding is the port would go through, the port is not playing for P3. You want to consider your delivery options. And as you go through that, I think transparency is important to tell the community, look everyone, we had these options and we thought this one is the best one to choose for the community.
It's a transparent process that everyone can look at.
It's funny because it's in other countries, it's embedded in the, in the process. It's a business case phase where at Minister of Finance, at country, it's like different, through a minister of finance or city, it's an authority, an owner before going forward with choosing P3 or any delivery method has to go through a business case, defining the project, looking at the different ways to finance it, the pro and cons, and then prove that, yeah, this delivery method is the best value for the community and the taxpayer. And it's absolutely transparent. And I think especially P3 is such an undefined term that it triggers a lot of perception and a lot of misperception by the public that transparency throughout the process, it's actually engage people in the process. They can take part of it or they feel they take part of it and know what's going on. And then they will be most likely to not to be in the position. And it's just, it's just education.
And I, just, this industry has changed a lot. I've been doing this a long time. I was literally an advocate, then a, then an opponent, and now I'm sort of, you know, foot in both camps. With, with good reasons, but the industry's gotten smarter. People have made the obvious mistakes. You've heard the stories about things being privatized and going bankrupt, which you can argue is a good thing or a bad thing for the public sector. The public sector doesn't get harmed, but we've had a ton of experience now so that when we have these conversations, we're so much better able to explain to you the balancing of risk and reward.
Hey, let me give you a good example. There was a project, SR125 in Southern California, that was done through a P3 approach. It was more private driven. The project got built, it got financed and it got up and running. Well, it came up and running about the time the Great Recession hit. So revenue struggled. The equity had to take a haircut. It went into a Chapter 11 bankruptcy process and the county eventually bought it. They bought it out of discount. So they got a good deal.
Good deal. They lowered the toll?
So they lowered the toll. So at the end of the day, it was a win-win. And the risk was shared appropriately and the public, the road's still there, it's still operating even when it went through bankruptcy. It was still operating.
They paid the toll revenue bond off with sales tax bonds. But, but yeah, I mean, you look at that, that's a failure, that's a success, it's both. But it's experience. You get some more.
You know, we don't have, we don't have time because we've got some questions to go through. I have already hit on a number of them. But if we have time, I'd like to circle back to the only example I'm aware of. An attempt at a P3 project in Oregon, was the ODOT's attempt to toll 205. Over the roads, I can't remember. I think Dundee Bypass was one, 205 and move. And they, using RP, they selected a quarry, they went through a couple of years worth of negotiations and then it just fell apart.
Well, that, that was, and I'll let you be more details.
I brought with me the report we wrote to kill that project for the state.
I would, I would, P3, P3 approach kind of goes in tiers. Some states started out with what I call a developer approach, where they essentially qualified a partner. There was no bid. There was no price bid. And it was, hey, let's develop this project together. So they developed it together and some of those just didn't come through with it. There was no project that ended up coming forward for various reasons. They didn't want a toll. They couldn't agree on the environmental. Texas did the same thing. They did a number of projects of where they were going to come in and build these big expressways in the state. And in many cases, the public said, no, they said, we don't want the road.
So in case of the Querry-ODOT deal, was that, nothing was ever built there, but to reach the Quiribor.
They did build the New Bird Bypass as a traditional state design bid build.
So it went back to a public.
It went back to a public project.
Right.
And I'm going to leave this with you, Michael, and read it. It was a bad business deal for the state.
Right.
So McQuary got some cash to pull it out of the project, right?
They did. This concept of we've hired you to do something, then we've cut it off, we'll pay you something and that's what happened, yeah.
And same thing in Texas. They, they had kind of buyout agreements where, and in fairness to the private entity, they did do work, okay? They did do analysis. They did go out and do work. But they had buyout provisions where they said, hey, if you decide, state, you don't want to do this, or local government, you don't want to do this, then we're going to have a buyout provision. So it may be 50% of their cost, it may be 80% of their cost, it may be 100% of their cost, depending on what that agreement was.
And I think, as well, projects are being successful or not, obviously during the execution of the contract, whether it's construction or operations. And where I've seen clearly success or failure is mostly one in having a good contract to start with, obviously. But when there's a good contract to start with, the major point of failure is the owner capability to manage the contract. Because once you give, once you signed your P3, you still have a lot of relation and you need to manage. You need to monitor the contract, which is different than the business you currently do when it's not a P3. And what we've seen, it's a shift of skills, of way of doing things. And it is critical that the owner can anticipate, skill up, train his own team to handle the contract. Because otherwise, usually what happens is the private sector will be fully armed to manage this contract. So they will test the boundaries and see if they take advantage or not. And it's better to have a balanced negotiation.
This brings up a good point, that is, if you do this as a P3, it doesn't be like, oh goodness, I'm so glad we don't have this on our plate anymore. You have to continue to moni- you're going to need. You have to continue to mon, you're gonna need an engineering firm working for you, protecting your interests. And the best examples.
A theodically a lawyer or a financial, depending on what issues come up.
Tappan Zee Bridge was built by a consortium led by Florida and it's a success. Florida lost money. They lost hundreds of millions of dollars. The state aggressively pursued their challenges on the pricing of, of design changes. And Florida lost. I mean, they lost money on a $2 billion bridge. But that's because the state came at them with very good advisors.
Let me, let me just pause there and say, is it, would it be time for a break? I think there's about an hour left, some questions and discussion, but your pleasure. Yeah, keep it to five to 10.
There's snacks out there, if anybody's hungry.
Yeah.
Sugar rush, salt rush.
I'll hold everyone up.